Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you all as to the meeting of the San Angelo Independent School District. This is our regular board meeting, and I'm the president, Max Parker. I'll read our script in a few minutes of how we coordinate our meetings, but before we do that, I'm going to have Father Robbie, or Father Hal Scott, who's the rector of the Anglican Church of the Good Shepherd, to come forward and do our invocation.
Let us bow in prayer. Our heavenly Father, first of all, we want to thank you for the showcase of talent from our excellent students and our wonderful programs. We also thank you for the freedom and the responsibility of the San Angelo Independent School District Board to discuss and decide issues concerned for the education and well-being of our children. We pray that you will give them the wisdom of Solomon and the grace of our Lord when discussing these important topics with inputs from our parents and citizens. We pray that the decisions made will result in better performance, more articulate students who are developing into the informed citizen patriots of our great state of Texas and the United States. We pray for your continued blessing and protection over our school district, administrators, principals, staff members, teachers, and students. May we preserve our founding principles on which our country was built and be open to new changes which build upon our heritage and strengthen our core identity in educational processes. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father Scott. All right, now we have at least two students from Reagan Elementary, Jackie Cortez and Julio Castillo, that are going to come forward to lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag. Would all of you please stand? Parents of these two wonderful students, if you want to come forward and take photos, we'll let them stay there for just a minute. All right, we have a full house, and as Father Scott said, we were the board and others were able to, were honored to be able to hear some of the students that'll be recognized tonight as they went through some of their state performances or what they will be presenting at state, whether it's choir or orchestra or other fine arts activities. But at this time, I need to read this. This is part of our record of the meeting. As I said, I want to welcome all of you here. I also welcome all of you who are watching this recording online or on our public access channel, Optimum Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and other administrators, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, prior to taking any votes on any action agenda item, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Also, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to provide to our board team, speak to our board team on any item not on our action agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room, it's right over here to your right, prior to the start of tonight's meeting should you want to speak on an issue not on our action agenda. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through public comment efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of five minutes or less to speak. You will be notified when your time is up and you are to stop speaking and return to your seat. You will not be given extra time. Please respect the privacies of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicate on the form that you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to district administration for information about the grievance process. If you already have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. All right. With that said, I'm going to now ask Rodney Chant, our athletic director for SAISD, to come forward in recognition of Central and Lakeview Athletics.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Dethloff. Board of Trustees, honored to recognize a number of our teams from the spring that had successful seasons, and they're getting here slowly but surely. First off, that we want to recognize are the maidens from Lakeview High School, the girls soccer team, coached by Henry Gonzalez. Coach Gonzalez?
Thank you very much, school board, Coach Chant, and the rest of y'all that came to here today. I'd like to introduce to y'all our Lakeview Maiden Soccer Team, who this year was just an amazing, amazing year for them, but I want to go ahead and recognize the people behind the team. First of all, special thanks to our trainers who could not be here, that would be Coach Wilde and Coach Vandenberg, also with the student trainers, Julia Garcia and Elena De Luna, our managers. Jace Carpenter could not be here today, but we have Adriana Hernandez and Julia Garcia, and one of our coaches, strength and conditioning, Coach Aaron Leeper. And Coach Bowe is my assistant coach, and I'd like to thank all of them especially for successful support this season. I want to go ahead and start off with our first player. We have Alyssa De La Cruz, she's a junior, three-year varsity, first-team All-District. Then we have number three, Alexandria Alley Flores, captain. She's a senior, four-year varsity academic All-State, 2022-23. She's a 248 All-District co-MVP. Number four, Isabel Cabrera, captain, senior, four-year varsity academic All-State, 2002-2023, second-team All-District. We have number five, Cassidy Jimenez, sophomore, two-year varsity. We have number eight, Avery, freshman, first-year varsity, first-team All-District. We have number nine, Eliana Soria, junior, three-year varsity, honorable mention All-District. Number 10, Saraid Rodriguez, two-year varsity sophomore, honorable mention All-District. Number 12, Valeria Chavez, freshman, first-year varsity. Number 13, Hannah Alexander, senior, four-year varsity, second-team All-District. Number 14, Brianna Lopez, sophomore, two-year varsity. Number 18, Angelina Ramirez, senior, three-year varsity, honorable mention All-District. Number 20, Faith Miller, captain, senior, four-year varsity academic All-State, 2022-23, first-team All-District. Number 23, captain, senior, three-year varsity academic All-State, 2022-23, first-team All-District. We have number 27, Brianna Vieda, senior, two-year varsity. We have number 32, Lizzie Cortez, senior, two-year varsity. And we have number 99, Jennifer Mata, junior, three-year varsity, second-team All-District. Before I tell you a couple more things about this team, I would like to recognize four of my players that have been with me the four years that we've been together, and if Alley Flores can step up, step forward. Hannah Alexander, Isabel Cabrera, and Faith Miller. These four players have helped this team win district champions for four years straight. Three of those years, they were by district champions. We went to the area three times, and these ladies won it one year, and they also went to the original quarterfinals. This year, this team played a number of 24 games, 17 wins, four losses, and three ties. This is an amazing group. I love them very much, and they are proud representatives of the legacy they leave at Lakeview High School. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the Lakeview Chiefs soccer, boys soccer team, coached by Kyle Jones.
Well, thank you guys for having us out. First, I want to thank my Lord and Savior for blessing us this year. Without Him, none of this would have been possible. What these boys have done is tremendous. We'll go ahead and get started. We have sophomore, honorable mention, Cameron Mobley. We have senior manager, Jayden Brazil. Freshman, Nathan Engel. Senior offensive MVP, Tyler Dunn. Sophomore, second-team, Francisco Ramirez. Junior, second-team, Sterling Gray. Senior, All-District MVP, Christian Gatlin. Junior, first-team, Ace Perez. Freshman, newcomer of the year, Isaiah Rios. Junior, first-team, Rodrigo Martinez. Junior, second-team, Manny Tellez. Freshman, honorable mention, Evan Gallegos. Freshman, honorable mention, Jose Enriquez. Sophomore, Jathan Martinez. Junior, Hagan Gossett. Junior, second-team, Elvis Couch. And freshman, Sebastian Heredia. And also, I want to thank Coach Hammack for his tireless work with our JV team. He's done a great job with a lot of these guys from last year, moving on up to the varsity level. This is 2023 district champions. Three school records are broke this year. We ended the year 21-1. The regular season, we ended 20-1. Thank you, guys.
Moving on, next we have the Lakeview Boys and Girls Powerlifting Team, led by Sergio Plata.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Plata. I'm the head powerlifting coach out at Lakeview. I'm here with my assistant coach, Tony Cortez. So these are all my regional and state qualifiers. To qualify for regionals, you have to be in the top 12 of your weight class, and I'm going to start off with the girls. Regional qualifiers are Angelica Estrada, Andrea Lopez, Destiny Castro, Esme Flores, Sophie Girdle, Ava Barnes, Malia Briones, Angelina Paez, Adrian Bangston, Brianna Vieda, Isabella Cordova, Brooke Skelton, and Janaya Jefferson. For the boys' regional qualifiers, I have Ethan Packard, Angel Salazar, Brayden Packard, Ian Cortez, Austin Wood, Alex Alcantara, Xavier Rangel, Isaac Cordova, Juan Ortiz, and John Cepeda. This is everybody who went to regionals. We have, out of the 23 that we took, not everybody can make it today, but out of the 23 powerlifters, we had eight go to state. A couple regional champions, I'd like to highlight them, is Juan Ortiz, senior, Brooke Skelton, senior, and Malia Briones, sophomore. At the regional powerlifting meet, at the boys' meet, Juan and Ian both set regional records in the bench, and Juan also set regional records in squat and deadlift, as well as total weight lifted. He owns all four records, as well as the school records. And the girls got third overall as a team. At regionals, we tied for second, but got third. For the boys' state qualifiers, we had Ethan Packard, if you could just raise your hand, Ian Cortez, Alex Alcantara, and Juan Ortiz. For the girls' state qualifiers, we had Angelica Estrada, Sophie Girdle, Malia Briones, and Brooke Skelton. A couple academic All-State awards. We had one for the boys, one for the girls. I don't think we've mentioned this to the boy yet, it might be a surprise, but Austin Wood got second-team academic All-State. Congratulations. And in powerlifting, there is a step above first-team academic All-State, and on the girl's side, we had Brooke Skelton, who made it to the academic All-State Elite Team. We had a great season. Thank y'all for your support, and go Chiefs and Maidens.
That's what I was going to say. Turn around. All right, Coach, Coach Chant. This is, we just introduced this young man, Juan Ortiz, but his bench press was 500 pounds. Just congratulations. And he squatted 700 pounds. Mr. Parker, Brooks' bench press was 225. And Ms. Girdle, who is qualifying in a ladder weight class, benched 205 at region. That's amazing.
Next up, we have the Central High School Tennis Team, led by Brent Abilis.
Good evening, everybody. I don't want to brag, but I've been known to bench press too a little bit, you know what I'm saying? So, no, congratulations to that young man. That is awesome. Just a little recap about our tennis season. I would say I'd give props to my assistant coach, but she's not here this year, but I'm still going to give a shout-out to Coach Creek, because she's been with me for the last three years, four years, and even though we didn't have her this year, you know, she helped shape these young kids into who they are and the things that we've done. So I know she may not be here, but she is expecting her first child in May, so wish she was here, miss her to death, and just, you know, thank her for everything she's done with these young kids while she was here. We had a great season. We finished out a phenomenal fall season with our team tennis, and then we went into our spring season, and so, you know, we played in six tournaments throughout the year. We went from late January all the way through mid-April. We just finished up. Our kids did phenomenal. We finished in the top percent of every tournament that we played in. We won the Lubbock-Cooper Tournament Invitational. We had a tremendous time, made some memories along the way. These kids were fortunate enough to do well at district and go on to the regional tournament. Last year, we took one team to the regional tournament, and this year, we were able to take three kids that participated in one regional alternate team. So without further ado, our first-place team in mixed doubles was Nate James and Kenzie King. Can you just wave? Nate James, he's a working man, so he couldn't get off of work, but he would have liked to have been here too. In mixed doubles, we also took our number-two mixed doubles team, and that was Adithi Potarala and Brent Wilcox. They lost to each other, they lost to our number-one mixed team in the finals, so it was nice to have an all-mixed team in the finals at district. And then in first place for our girls' doubles, that was Carissa Castillo and Hannah Harton. And then we had a boys' doubles that was so super close to going to the regional tournament. We got the playback, and we actually were playing in the semis, and we lost a very close match in the semis, and then we turned around and got third place, but in tennis, it works where we have a playback, and we earned the playback, and we just came up a hair short, but we took those guys as regional alternates, and we were super proud of their efforts, because this was both their first time in the top eight in our ladder for the year, and so that was Bo Wilcox and Ryan Hildebrand. And Ryan Hildebrand cannot be here tonight. He actually got accepted into the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Program, so he was touring that university. So good for him. Real quick, not only are they studs on the court, but also off the court. We nominated our seniors for academic All-State with the THSCA, and we were lucky enough that Ryan Hildebrand was our first-team THSCA All-State first-team candidate. He earned that honor. And then Kenzie King and Nate, no, Kenzie King and who? Sayada. I'm sorry. Sayada. They were the THSCA Academic Second Team All-State, and then Nate James and Carissa Castillo were the THSCA Academic All-State Honorable Mention. So that was a tremendous thing for all of them. That was all of our seniors, and so they earned those with a high GPA, ACT, SAT, all those good things in the top 10% of their classes. So that was our season, and we look forward to next season. So thank y'all very much, and thank you admin and everybody else for everything you do for us and our facilities and everything, and so thank y'all very much. We couldn't have done it without your support. And parents, thank you, parents. Appreciate you.
Next up, we have the Lady Cats Soccer Team, coached by Benjamin Henry.
It's so quiet in here. It's kind of creepy. So I'm going to start talking. First and foremost, I want to thank my two coaches that are here. Coach Andrews is on the end over there, and Coach Cottle here. They did a fantastic job. They were brilliant this year for me, and I appreciate them. I appreciate them. I always want to start off by saying, too, this is a group that lost 17 kids last year, and we had seven returners come back. So their accomplishments are pretty fantastic in that regard. I never really call things a rebuilding year. I don't believe in it. And the girls know that as well. So I'm super proud of their accomplishments from that, on that side, too. But they had 12 wins, five losses, and five ties overall this year. They were third in district. They made their 16th straight playoff appearance this season. They were bi-district champions and area qualifiers. They came across a monster in South Lake Carroll in the, in the second round, who were the defending state champs. But they threw down, and I was super proud of them for that as well. And I think it's just going to boast well for the returners, too, on that side, to see kind of that, that kind of group and going up against it. I think it'll, it'll pay us, pay us back next year as well. I'm going to start with my seniors, of course, and then just step up and give you a wave. We'll start in alphabetical order. So Marissa Adelano. She was a captain this year and first-team All-District. Matty Carrion. Ali Karan. Aubrey Gonzalez. Aubrey got hurt on us this year. It was, it was sad because she's a special little kid and a special little player. So she didn't get to play this time. But Sidney Herbert. Melinda Holguin. Lexi Templin, who was also a captain this year, and she has first-team All-District honors, too. And Ariana Tovar. Those are my seniors. My juniors, Nadia Alvarado. Anna Holguin, who was second-team All-District. Alyssa Villarreal, who was second-team All-District. And Eva Obara, who was second-team All-District as well. My sophomores, Ashley Herbert, who was honorable mention this year. Carly Martinez, who was first-team All-District this year. Jackie Santos. Who says she did an incredible job parking her big truck in the parking lot today, but she got honked at three times and wasn't aware. I'm just kidding. She did fantastic. And Kenzie Templin. Sadie Vasquez. And my manager this year, Mariana Contreras. My fishies, I had four of them, my freshmen, who looked scared to death up here. Adrina Dina. Jillian Hernandez. Talia Samiripa, who was honorable mention this year. And Amari Vincent. And that is your 2023 Lady Cat Soccer Team. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have the Bobcat Boys Soccer Team led by Tony Vu.
All right. Thank you all for having us. This is my 2023 Bobcat varsity soccer team. We finished with nine wins, six losses, and eight ties, and finished fourth in district this year. We played El Paso East Lake in our bi-district playoff round and ended up losing three to one to a very solid team. But proud of these guys. And we missed out on the playoffs last year, but they worked their tails off in the offseason and won a pretty much a playoff game, our last district game against Friendship, to get us into the playoffs. So I'm proud of them and all they've accomplished this year. Okay, starting on the far side, we have senior Caleb Katono. He was first-team All-District this year. Junior David Quiros, he was second-team All-District. Senior Nathan Ramos, All-District Honorable Mention. Junior Jacob Castro. Junior Ashton Tapia, he was All-District Honorable Mention. Junior Zach Grube. Sophomore Link Hanson. Sophomore Brandon Sadio, he's first-team All-District. Sophomore Andrew Espinoza. Senior Jaden Lewis, he was a Texas High School Coach Association and Texas Association of Soccer Coaches Academic All-State this year. We have junior Brian Paro. Freshman Gabriel Quiros. Sophomore Christian Vu, he was the newcomer of the year in our district this year. Senior Anthony Watson, he's also a Tasco Academic All-State selection this year. Sophomore TJ Alvarado, he was second-team All-District. And then senior Sean Snyder. And that's your 2023 Bobcat Soccer Team.
evening to continue our student recognitions and be able to recognize our many fine arts students from both Lakeview and Central High School. We had the wonderful opportunity of listening to our fine arts music programs and theater students perform at both high schools downstairs prior to the board meeting. These students have excelled in theater, arts, and music this year. Our directors will share more about their successes with you. We're going to begin with Ms. Heather Shup York, Central High School Art.
Hi there. I am Heather Shup York, and I have the privilege of facilitating art-making with students at Central High School. Let me see this. So here's some of our courses that we offer. So I'd love to go on and on about our numerous students who entered and won awards in the stock show creative arts events, or how our newly-formed art club has been flourishing, is currently planning our second annual CHS Seniors Art Show, and we will even be helping, they'll be helping with our first art camps for kids this summer. I have stories for days about the thought-provoking topics that my AP students are exploring in their portfolios right now, and about our student Haley, who received a Gold Seal Award for her artwork, which has been on display at various events around the state. I could go on and on about Central's 101 student artwork entries in our regional UIL event called VACE. Fifty-eight of them advanced to the area judging, and two of our students are advancing to the state level of the event. Both students, you can see their artwork here, are in class with our fabulous ceramics teacher Suzanne Horner. And if you could talk to these two students, they would tell you their stories. Artwork becomes way more meaningful when you know what they represent. Maya's artist statement says that this piece seen on the left fills her with nostalgia as it represents her admiration for architecture, French culture, and childhood games. On the right, Channing's statement describes this piece representing her journey on the rocky path of dyslexia and her determination to make it through the storm. These are the kinds of stories that art educators get to learn. I've had a student whose house burned down in a fire, and she started to work through the anguish of that experience through her art. I've had one student who could only speak Spanish but could visually portray exactly what he wanted to communicate. Students with schizophrenia, past self-harm habits, unstable home situations, criminal records, all who found some kind of solace through art-making. I had a student who chose a piece of art she'd made as her way of coming out as gay to me and later to her parents. I have a student who finished this piece today that I brought with me. It may not be the perfect example of technical skill, but it is the only project she's turned in all year. It is a one-point perspective drawing where she designed a baby nursery. She's currently six months pregnant, and she found meaning, purpose, and even practicality in this artwork. Art teachers have the honor of walking alongside our students as they express their daily happenings, work through past traumas, and build major self-confidence. Sure, the lesson plans are important, the technical skills, the elements of art, the interdisciplinary connections, various media exploration, art history, and critiques, but it's the perseverance, the diversity, and the humanity that I get to witness through student art that makes me so passionate about my job. So on behalf of my coworkers, my students, and the community of San Angelo, thank you so much for your support of our art program at Central.
Hello. My name is Alma Gonzalez, and I am the head teacher at Lakeview High School for their art department. Here are some of the courses that we offer out there. So I want to take a moment and recognize some of the collaborations that we're working on out on the north side. We kind of dumbed ourselves the north side art program. We work with Lincoln and do a lot of vertical alignment with our students and put ourselves out into the community, which is one of our biggest goals this year and for future years to come. So these two flyers are two of the shows that we had this year. We had a Recuerdos y Huertos with the Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center, and our Mardi Gras Student Art Event with the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts. Some of our competitions and collaborations and student involvement all kind of include, again, VACE, we had five entries, two region qualifiers, which was going both to Daniel Bedes. It's hard enough to get one. He got both of his artwork recognized. Stockton Rodeo, we did pretty good. You guys can see the artwork displayed in the break room for when you guys go out there. Just kind of take a moment, see some of our, our work. We also entered the Texas School Counselor Association Human Rights Act Contest. Northside collaborators, people who we have reached out to, including, but not limited to the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, the Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center, Lincoln Middle School, who we work very close with, in Plainer, Texas, San Angelo Reads this year, the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 457. We are also in talks with the San Angelo Art Alliance to get more local artists out at Lakeview and try to do some more collaborations with them, pushing our program, giving a positive light to these students. Student and school involvement, we have done a mural for JROTC. We've done plenty of projects with our athletic programs. Mariachi is always a great supporter of us and us of them, and so on. So here's just kind of a snapshot of things going on throughout the year. You'll see pictures of our shows. There's picture of the students working on San Angelo Reads float for this year. I think it was a Christmas parade. Our students demolishing the wall to the JROTC building, and some of the logos of our biggest supporters and collaborators. So thank you guys so much. I also really want to give a very special thank you to our principal, Mr. Zachary Ramirez, who just kind of gives me a green light on everything I want to do out there, which really helps when I have those crazy ideas to push my kids out there. So we would love to see you guys more out into our shows and our community outreach. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. My name is Jason Jones. I have the privilege of being the band director at Central High School and carrying on the long tradition of success that, after some of my research, goes back to Homer Anderson being the band director at San Angelo High School from 1930-something to 1970. Some random person sent me a program from a, from a band concert in 1940. And sure enough, where does the picture at? It's in the gym at Oaks. It's, and it's the orchestra. It's a really cool thing. It's like, hey, we found this in our dad's stuff. Would you want it? I'm like, yes, I want that. It's really, really cool. But we have had a great year. I want to take a quick second to introduce our staff members. This is Mr. Robert Cosco, Mr. Mike Berry, Ms. Stephanie Dearborn, and Mr. Caleb Leonard. We also have Ms. Crystal Mendez, who is our color guard instructor. She is having one of her color guard audition camps after school today. So that's where she is. We have had a fantastic year, going back from marching season starting the year and the end of July, going all the way through concert contests, which happened just a few weeks ago. I want to kind of give you a little bit of some of the accomplishments and highlights from the year. We had a first division in marching. This is the 12th year in a row that we have made a first division in marching. Went to area marching contests and finished 10th place out of a very competitive 6A field. We have, a lot of kids are very successful in the individual realm. We had five students that made the All-Region Jazz Band, and those same five qualified for the area level and auditioned for state. We had 21 students that qualified for the All-Region Band. Eleven of those students qualified for area. Eleven of those students qualified for area that auditioned for all-state. And then, as you have met them, we had two students advance to all-state, Lauren Ochoa, this was her third year, and Mia Wilcox, which was her first year. We had 25 students earn first divisions at solo and ensemble contests on their solos. We had 44 students earn first divisions on their ensembles, and then we have 45 of those students advance to the state, UIL state contest at solo and ensemble. Recently, we went to concert sight reading that was held at Lakeview, and we had three of our concert bands earned one in concert and sight reading, earning a concert sweepstakes, and one of our bands earned a one onstage. Combined with the first division for marching in the fall in the concert and sight reading, that earned the sweepstakes trophy, which we have here, which is the highest honor that UIL can bestow upon a band program as having superior ratings in marching concert and sight reading. And this is the 12th year in a row that that has happened for Central High School. So we're very pleased on a fantastic year. And most recently, this past weekend, our indoor percussion ensemble finished first in their class at the Texas Color Guard Championships in College Station and won the state championship. So let's give it up for them, yeah. Finally, I want to invite all of you to our spring concert, which is May the 7th at the Foster Communications Coliseum. We're doing all our bands on the floor at the same time, so it's going to be a different experience, and my goal is to get it done in an hour. So it'll be at 3:00 PM on Sunday, May the 7th. So we hope you can be there, and thank you so much for your support and all you do for fine arts in our district.
Hi, I am Emily Rocha, and together with Michael Martin, we direct the Central High School orchestras. We've also had a fantastic year, and I'm actually going to work backwards. I'm going to tell you about our most recent accomplishments, and then we also have several students who are individually successful. So we are, we're super proud of what they've done. We've had a couple of group successes. The most recent is we earned sweepstakes at UIL Concert and Sight Reading, which makes the 39th consecutive year that the Central High School Orchestra has earned sweepstakes, and that's one of the longest-running streaks in the state of Texas. And yeah, yeah. We're very proud of our kids. Next year will be number 40, so we're excited about that. Our students competed in solo and ensemble in February. We had 34 students earning ones, which is the highest rating possible, and we had 14 students qualified to go to state solo and ensemble, which will occur at the end of May. Now, in order to qualify for state solo and ensemble, they have to earn a one on a class-one solo, which is the hardest level, the highest level of solo that they can play, and they have to perform it memorized. And so they might have it memorized, but if they don't perform it memorized, they're not going to qualify. We had 16 students make the all-region orchestra, six advanced to area, and of course, you met Greg, who was our all-stater on bass, who placed the first in the entire state. So we were very proud of him, and you got to hear him, as well as some of his colleagues, perform down in the lobby. Out of these students, we had 15 students earn Texas Music Scholar. And in order to earn a Texas Music Scholar Award, you have to make the all-region orchestra or band, this is a multi-organization honor. You have to perform a class-one solo, and you have to maintain an overall average of A in your classes. And so for 15 of our students to accomplish these three things is pretty impressive, and we're very proud of them. And then, finally, I just want to say, last year, at the end of the year, I, what I said was, I cannot wait to see what our students do in the future. And then in September, as you know, we received word that we had placed top 10 in the national competition. And our students get so much more out of orchestra than just these competitions. They learn leadership skills, they learn team-building, they learn how to problem-solve, and it's so essential. But I once again say, I look forward to seeing what we do in the future. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Landon Gilmore. I'm the head choir director at Central High School, and my two Vanna Whites here are carrying our sweepstakes trophies. So the highlights of this year, just briefly to share with you, we had students starting in May of last year preparing for the all-state choir auditions, and many of them going to an all-state camp in the summer. We had 15 make a region choir, five advancing to the next round called pre-area, and then two advancing to the state competition in January, with one making it to the Texas All-State Tenor Bass Choir. You met him last month. His name was Merritt Shelton. Some other highlights of our year, we were invited and performed with the Angelo State University Choirs on their winter concert. We are also invited to perform with the San Angelo Symphony next winter on their Christmas concert. UIL solo and ensemble contest this spring, we had 58 students participating, which is a very high number for a choir program of our size. Thirty-one of those students earning an excellent or better, 28 qualifying for state, which is also a very high number. We took some students and some community members to sing in Carnegie Hall in New York last month, and that was a new highlight for our program and for our students and our community. We're also looking forward to a trip this summer to Orlando, where we will perform in a recording workshop. We have about 50-something students traveling with us for that. And then just last week on Thursday, we went to Andrews and performed the in UIL Concert and Sight Reading evaluations. We took four groups. Three of those brought back a sweepstakes, which, as you know, is a superior first-division rating in both concert and sight reading. And we got to looking. We have to move some trophies around in our classroom, so as we were looking at that, we looked and tried to figure out, how far back do those go? And basically, we found that there are trophies going back as long as it was Central High School and even back to when the San Angelo High School days. So we found trophies going back consecutively to the 1950s for sweepstakes ratings, so it's at least 60 years at this point that that streak has continued, so we're proud of that. Anything I'm forgetting? So anyway, we've had a wonderful year, and our spring concert is Monday, May 15th, and that will be at Holy Angels Catholic Church, and we'd love to see any of you there, our students, do a really beautiful job, and it's always an emotional concert at the end of the year. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jessica Olson, and I teach music partners at Central. This is our second year to offer this program, and this year we got to expand it to two class periods a day, which is really, really exciting. One of the things that I got to do this year, which I was really excited to do, was I went with the music therapist we work with, and we spoke about our class at the Southwest Music Therapy Association Convention in Austin. And that was very exciting because they, there are several school districts around Texas that have music therapists on staff, like we have speech therapists that work at our school. They have music therapists that work in the schools, and there are several school districts that are very, very interested in our, the model of our program, and have reached out to Amy and to me, and are very interested in starting a similar program at their own school districts. So I'm really hoping that we'll have some people coming to visit and get some ideas for that. One of the other things that we do in my class that is a lot of fun is, I call myself like the weird cousin of the music department, because I, my classes are in the band hall, but I'm not a band director or an orchestra director or a choir director, but that's where I hang out. So one of the cool things I get to do is I get to collaborate with all of the directors. And a couple weeks ago, we had instrument demo days, and so we had, the directors came, and they showed, you can see some pictures. So the directors came and they demonstrated the brass and the woodwind instruments to the kids, and then they got to play some of them. So here are some photos of them getting to play these instruments, and that was a lot of fun. And I have several students in my classes that are in band and orchestra, so those kids came and played for them. And I even got to bring my horn and play for them, so that was fun, because I like never get to do that at school. And one day, we also had, Mr. Leonard came with a couple, he brought a couple of students. If you look at that one on the right in the middle, the kid with the blue sweatshirt, that's my son. So they came and demonstrated percussion instruments. And I want to say something about one of the students in this picture. He's nonverbal, doesn't really participate a lot in class, but you know, when we said, "Go play a percussion instrument," he had the best time playing that vibraphone over there, which is why, just one of the reasons why this class is so important. Here's some more pictures. Deborah on the bottom left over there, she thought that mark tree was the coolest thing and could not wait to get her chance to play it. And when we said, "If you want to play something, come up and play it," she ran over there, she picked it up, carried it back over to her chair, and just had the best time. On one of the days, we went over to the orchestra room, and they played, they played a little concert for us for both class periods, and then their students helped my students play the instruments. They demonstrated it and let them play. I didn't get as many pictures, because we were having so much fun, I forgot to take any pictures. So that's, oh. So that's my class. I'm hoping in the future to collaborate with universities in the area to allow their music education students to come into my class and see what we do, so that then they have an idea and that they can start incorporating that into, when they get jobs and go out and they're in various school districts. That's something I'm really hoping to do. That's what I wanted to talk to you about, by the way. So I'm hoping that next year, that's something we can do to collaborate with those students so that they know that this is something that's super important and that they need to be thinking about, because music is for all, and this class just really, oh, the word lost, like, left my brain, incorporates that, or value espouses that. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to teach that, and it's just my favorite time of the day every day. So thank you.
Hello. I'm Laura Smith from Central High School. This is Jasmine Mendoza, and she is our tech director. So, I'm going to give this to you. Central High School, we took 24 students to enter performance and technical competitions at our Texas Thespian Festival in the fall. We had a student, Maddie Serta, who earned superior ratings on her monologues and advanced to nationals. She'll be able to go to nationals this summer. Lily Kushner was named to the All-Star Improvisation Team and performed for the delegates at the conference. Our tech relay team, which is pictured there at the top, they earned first place in the cable relay and placed in several other events. Our hair and makeup design team, and you can see them there with the bullet wound, they earned second place overall at the state competition. We are not just about competition, so we also have performances. In the fall, our theater produced two mainstage one-acts, Sleep on the Wind, which is the one that was pictured on the previous slide there in the bottom, and The Zoo Story, which is on the next one. One full-length mainstage production, A Christmas Carol, and three students directed one-acts. And those are, on the left, those are pictures of two of the student-directed one-acts. We had three students who directed their peers in performances, and that was really special. Students also performed a Christmas Carol parody written by Ms. Mendoza, who's quite a funny person. They performed it for San Angelo Reads this year, so that was a lot of fun. We also, every year, host a Valentine dance with the Bannaker students, which is a really special time that our kids look forward to all year long to be able to do this dance. Our one-act play, Fuddy Meers, was named alternate to by district this year, and we're really proud of the students and how much they grew. We had Lennox Pickering and Bobby Seeger's won All-Star Tech. Addison Phelps was honorable mention All-Star cast, and Piper Horton was All-Star cast during that competition. Coming up, we'll be producing our 21st Annual Spring into Theater Variety Show, which you're all invited to. It will be April 27th and 28th, and it'll involve more than 30 students onstage and backstage. Also, our JV one-act play goes to competition May 13th in Midland with the Brothers Grimm Spectaculathon, and we'll have a public performance of that on Monday, May 8th. So we'd love to have you come and join us. Thank you so much for your support. We appreciate you.
Good evening. I'm Ezra Ramirez, the new assistant director of Mariachi Los Casiques from Lakeview High School. And this year, we've had a very busy year. It started off, on October 7th, we had the great privilege and honor of accompanying the White House pianist, Dr. Christopher Schmidt. It was an amazing experience for our students. And then shortly after that, we had our all-region tryouts, our all-region mariachi tryouts, of which eight of our students were chosen to make up part of this group, and Lakeview actually held first chairs in every section. So that was something really awesome. In January, January 28th, we went to El Paso, and we participated in the Region UIL Mariachi Festival, which, in which they, our performance received a Division One rating, which allowed them to go to the state level. In February, into February, we went to the Mariachi State Festival in Seguin, Texas, and for the first time ever, everybody was super excited, because the Los Casiques received a superior, superior rating from all three judges, meaning they got sweepstakes. Hopefully, it's the first of many. And one of our musicians, our trumpet player, Isaac Carrales, received a Outstanding Performer Award. He was specifically chosen for this. And also, Isaac Carrales went and ranked number seven in the state for mariachi trumpet when he tried out for the state mariachi. On March 3rd, we went to South Texas, which is where all of the big, impressive mariachi students are located in the state and probably even in the nation. And there, we earned second place in the 4A division. And on April 1st, earlier this month, we were able to accompany this two-time Latin Award Grammy winner, Maico Salgado, which was another amazing experience for our students. And we currently are preparing for our spring concert, which will be at the River Stage on May 4th at 6:30, and hopefully, we'd like to invite everybody and whoever can make it, come out and support. We thank you guys for everything you do. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Josh Bailey, one of the band directors over at Lakeview High School, and this is Jesse Bailey, one of the other directors at Lakeview High School. No relation, just happen to have the same last name. Anyway, I came tonight to talk to you all about the band students on the north side. Jesse and I have the privilege of teaching over there, teaching those kids. We have a great time teaching band. Also on the north side, the middle school and high school, in the mornings, we're all at the high school, in the afternoons, Jesse and I spend a little over half our day at the middle school teaching over there. So we're kind of all one thing over there. So it's with Ms. Clark and Ms. Gonzalez. They do a great job. This year was a historic year for the bands on the north side, and I can tell you about that here in a moment. You see all of our hardware down at the bottom that we brought. Just wanted to come brag on all these kids and their hard work. Our marching band started out the year with two goals in mind. One was to march area with no holes, meaning that all the students pass their classes, and they all make it to contests and show up. And we had never done that before at a marching contest, and that's kind of tough, and that was one of our biggest goals. Second goal was to make the finals at area marching contest, which is another big deal, and you get one of these Texas-shaped plaques. So first goal, day of area came, and I'm taking roll, going down the list, all the students had passed, all the students with spots had passed their classes, and going down the roll, it got to the last name, and every kid was there. And that was a really big moment for us, and we were really excited about that. And that was a really big moment for us, and we were really excited about that. And then we went and we marched, and there were 17, 18 bands at area, and they take seven to finals. So we knew we had to make the top seven. We really wanted to be in finals. And they announced to us, we had made seventh place in the prelims, and kids went nuts. I hit the gritty. And it was, it was just a really good day for us. So marching contests this year on the North Side was really awesome. Then came the next time of year, we have region band. We had 22 students make the region band this year. Nine made it to area. And we had one all-stater, and then we had two all-state alternates, which is a big deal. So we had a really good region band season this year. In the spring, we went to solo ensemble. We had, I think, four solos and two ensembles. They all received first divisions, and our two ensembles are going down to the state contest. Y'all heard the Clearnet Choir earlier today. And then came concert and site reading time for us. We hosted it over here at Lakeview, second year. It went well. Our students love hosting. They love getting to help and put things together and work like that. So hosting events like that is really good for our kids. Both bands at Lakeview got straight ones from all the judges on concert and site reading. That's the fourth one ever for the symphonic band. First one was from Mr. Ramos, mariachi. Yeah. And anyway, so that was third, fourth one from the symphonic band. And then also, what's historic is that the Lincoln Middle School bands also both got sweepstakes all across the board. It was the second one ever for symphonic band. The first one was with Jesse when he was at the middle school. And so this year, for the first time ever on the North Side, all bands received sweepstakes. So it was a very big deal for us. And then, yeah, and I guess the last thing I just want to say is, you know, all this accomplishments and everything wouldn't have happened without all the hard work from all of our awesome students. And then, of course, from Ms. Clark, Ms. Gonzalez, and Jesse Bailey, who was the man. So, yeah. But thank you for recognizing us and letting us come up here and talk about our kids tonight. Thank you.
I'm the orchestra director at Lincoln Middle School and Lakeview High School. This year, our year started off at Lakeview with regional auditions in September, and I had three students audition, and all three made it to area auditions. And then I had one student in the top orchestra and then two students in the lower orchestra. And moving on to our solo and ensemble contest, I had five ensembles and then I had two, six soloists. So majority of our students were reserved twos, and then our quintet, the one that you heard downstairs, they received a Division I and they're headed to state. And then my two soloists within that quintet are headed to state for their solos. And concert and site reading, our goal is always to get a division higher than we got last year. So last year, Lincoln, we got straight fours and everything, and then this year, we got straight threes. So we're really building our program here at Lincoln. And then at Lakeview, our, we have a young group. There's about a gap in our classifications, and so I have a really young group this year. A majority of my group is freshmen or first-time players. And so I have about two upperclassmen. And then we got a three in concert and two in site reading. So we're still just working and we're building every day, and the kids are loving, I'm loving seeing the kids start from sixth grade and go all the way up until they're seniors. My first group of sixth graders was freshmen this year, and it was really weird seeing them at Lakeview on campus. I'm like, "You're not supposed to be here. You're supposed to be at Lincoln." But I love my job working with these kids, and I really hope that they continue working hard and that we can just keep building the program. So thank you for allowing us to have a great fine arts program here in San Angelo ISD.
My name is Amy Harris. I'm the choir director of the North Side Choir Program consisting of Lincoln Middle School and Lakeview High School, called the North Side Choir Program because I do not believe that they should be really different when that's my only feeder school. So I've been working on streamlining this program into one big program, which is awesome because now I've got freshmen that I also had when they were in sixth grade, who they know most of the kids at Lincoln. So I'll have a kid who wants to be in choir at high school, and they'll be like, "Oh, is so-and-so in the choir now? Are they still in choir?" And I'm like, "Yes, yes, they're there. They're there for you." Trying to turn it into a mentorship program, these kids already have good influences when they get up to that campus because they already know these kids. They already know, "Oh, well, I know this kid. I know she's taken these classes. I know I can ask her for help. I can get tutoring from A, B, C, and D." And that's something that's exciting and something that I'm really trying to push forward more this year. And so what we've got going on right now, I've got, out of my three soloists that went to solo and ensemble, all of them performed Class Ones. Two of them are advancing to state. The other received an excellent rating. Eliza Fernandez and Anna Bain are both advancing to state solo and ensemble competition on solos. Anna on Napulso Disparar, and Eliza Fernandez on Death Song by Swanson. They're both very excited about this. For Eliza Fernandez, this is her senior year. She's our choir president. She's so excited to go out with a bang like that. And then for Anna Bain, she's our vice president. She will be promoted to president next year, and she's really excited. This is also her second year in a row competing at that state competition. So she's, we're pretty hyped for that. Upcoming, well, at Christmas, almost missed that. We also performed with ASU and with Central for their Christmas performance. We have also been invited to sing with the Symphony and with Central this fall, this winter for their concert. We have a concert coming up on May 16th that I'm really excited for. That's our spring show concert at the Murphy Performance Hall. Part of what I'm really excited for, besides that it's a kid's choice, it's kid's choice. Our pop shows, they choose the music. We all learn it together. They do their choreography, and they love getting to put that together and then perform it for people. We get kids auditioning solos. And then one thing I'm looking forward to that I'm starting to do is at the end of the concert, all future varsity members will sing with varsity choir and end the year out with a bang. So if I've got kids that we know are going into varsity next year, they're going to sing our varsity challenge piece with the varsity at the end of the year. And they're excited about that. I've got some kids already working on the music, getting in there early, coming in every single morning for tutorials, even when sometimes you wish they wouldn't, to get that little bit of extra help, because they want to do the best that they can do. So that's really exciting. Just getting ready to go on to a new year, do more awesome stuff. This fall, we'll be, we're preparing to do another Halloween Spooktacular concert. Kids always love doing those. So that's what we've got up and coming. So, thank you, and y'all have a great day.
I'm Heck Knutson, the theater director out at Lakeview, and it's been a fun year for us. I took kids back to Texas Thespian for the first time in 10 years this year, kind of get their feet wet so they could see what it's like. So we'll have some competitors in that next year. And then for one-act play this year, you saw our piece, What I Did Last Summer. We ended up alternate at the district contest by one point, which was kind of tough, but we survived it. And we had Amos Garza, who you saw today, the one who changed into a swimsuit for y'all, ended up All-Star Cast, and then Grace Hossel was also All-Star Cast. And our entire tech crew was selected as the best tech crew of the entire contest at the district level this year. So it's been a great year. We thank y'all for all of your support, and Mr. Ramirez, and Tiffany for everything she does for us. So look forward to seeing y'all. We will do a public performance in May, and I will let y'all know our final date. I don't have that on the calendar yet, but as soon as we do, I'll let y'all know when that is going to be, and hopefully you can see our final show of the year this year. Thank y'all.
Thank you to our wonderful fine arts directors. We appreciate you greatly. Here in San Angelo, we are blessed to have a longstanding partnership supporting the men, women, and families of Goodfellow Air Force Base. Strong military families call our community home and add so much to our West Texas community and our SAISD schools. Today, as part of Month of the Military Child this April, we honor and recognize the commitment, sacrifice, and resiliency of our military's youngest heroes for their role in supporting the United States Armed Forces and our nation. In our district, we have nearly 500 military-connected children and are also proudly home to four TEA Purple Star campuses, Bel Air, Glenmore, Glen, and Central. The Purple Star designation recognizes Texas schools that show their support and commitment to meeting the unique needs of our military-connected students and their families. Tonight, we are joined in this recognition by several of our outstanding military-connected students and their families, including the Mason family with 3rd grader Roman, 1st grader Remington, and pre-kindergartner Riley, all from Glenmore Elementary. The Lawrence family, Barrett is a 1st grader at Bonham Elementary, and Berkeley is not in the system yet. And the Blunier family, McKenzie is a 7th grader at Glen Middle School, and Kennedy is a 2nd grader at Fort Concho. We also have the Allen family, who you may remember from last year's recognition. Maisha is a junior at Central High School, and he was recently named for the second year in a row, the Boys and Girls Club of America Texas Military Youth of the Year for going above and beyond in academics, character, leadership, and community service. Again, he is the first San Angelo ISD and Goodfellow Air Force Base student to receive this honor. I want to add that two of our parents of those military-connected students are some of our wonderful SAISD difference makers. Lamont Allen teaches at San Jacinto, and Ms. Jennifer Blunier is our assistant principal at San Rita Ann Fannin. So again, we want to remind our community to join us in making the extra effort to lift up our military families and salute the unique contribution and resiliency of our military children. At this time, if our special guests and their families could come join us for a photo Thank y'all so much for your service. And if y'all would please walk around and shake our board team's hands, they would I'd like to welcome our friends from Synergistic to take on the next recognition about the
Good evening, and thank you for having us. This award is a Best in Class Award, and it's not our award, it's your award. It's because of the support and the cooperation we've had from administration, board, staff, that we have been able to do this over the last eight-plus years to create a good program here in San Angelo. This has been a team effort. We could not do it without the team that y'all provide, and we don't believe y'all could do it as well without our team. So we truly think that this is a team effort. And we're going to talk a little bit about raw dollars today, not cost avoidance. Our cost avoidance number, which is about 8.6 million, would take today's prices and everything based on before the program started, how things were running 12 hours a day at every campus, and that kind of stuff. So that would be a cost savings of about 8.6 million. But we're going to talk about the raw dollar savings. This program started, I can't see that. Oh, okay. The cost, this is, 81% of this is electric and gas. We don't control the water, who waters when, or how that's done, so we don't include that in some of this stuff. So June of 2013 through May of 2014 was the beginning year. The utility bills were approximately 2.8 million per year at that point in time. The average cost over the last eight years has been 2,051,000. So that's a savings of about 770,000 per year that you're averaging, a reduction in the utility cost. So that's a total raw savings of 6.1 million dollars that you have not spent on utilities that you might have spent without this program. This also includes the fact that you've added over 24,000 square feet of construction at Glen, Fort Concho, and the tennis centers at the high schools, plus 76 new air conditioning units. That's those three campuses plus all the elementary gyms that got air conditioned, which is over 363 tons of air conditioning that's been added. So with all of that, still have a savings of a little over 6.1 million dollars. Cost increases over this time, water cost has gone up about 46%. Gas has gone up about 64%, most of that in the last six months. And electric costs have gone up 16%. And that fluctuates a little bit because you've had better rates and worse rates over the time, but the average is about 16% increase.
Thanks, Steve. Well, Steve and I like to focus on above raw dollars is usage because that is apples to apples. A kilowatt is the same regardless of the year. Pre-Synergistic, your electric usage, which is your highest utility bill, 68% of your cost, 70% of that is HVAC. You can see there, 26.2 million kilowatts were used that year. Your, your averaging out is 17.6 million. That's a 33% savings. There's your gas, 413,000 CCF. Now you're about a quarter million CCF. That's a 39% decrease. When you add those two together, you get your KBTU. Buildings in America are judged according to their purpose, and they're given a score of KBTU per square foot. That's your energy use intensity. You may have seen this before. Your EUI was 52.9. The average score for schools in America is 48. So you started above average, now you're at 33. So that's a decrease of 38%. Steve and I want to keep you there, and we do that three ways. Number one is online, in the buildings, and then with staff involvement. And those numbers to the right represent 2022 figures. Online, Steve and I, every school day, check every building to make sure things are coming on correctly. But in addition, we set every schedule, student, holidays, et cetera. So we set 1,390 schedules last year. In the buildings, we are onsite over 1,800 times, 1,802. And finally, staff involvement, because that's the most important thing. Energy conservation is not about the equipment, it's about... it's about who's using the equipment. And we always brag on the staff here, we believe they do a better job than anyone of having an awareness of energy conservation. But we also want to keep them comfortable. And we've answered over 1,800 comfort requests. And that takes a lot off the plate of maintenance, because Carlos and his crew in the HVAC department, they're busy enough just maintaining and repairing the equipment. So if we can help in that regard, that certainly adds to the value. And then finally, something that adds value, you're aware of this, is the Energy Star Awards. It's kind of like a blue ribbon award for energy efficiency. All the student campuses in 2017 and 2021 earned that distinction. The question mark by 2023 is because it's still in progress. Steve and I just finished going to every campus, over 200 classrooms. We gathered the data, we submitted that to the home office, and now they're submitting that application on your behalf. So we hope to know soon whether or not you'll receive the Energy Star for the third consecutive year, and that's quite an honor. But in summary, we can confidently say that partnering with Synergistic can guarantee that you are going to keep more money in your budget every year to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that energizes Steve and me, because we love this district and we love this community as you do. And I equate your energy conservation program to someone who worked very hard to achieve their ideal body weight. You know, the healthy diet, exercise. But if you've ever experienced that in real life, you know that once you achieve that body weight, that's when the real work begins. Because you want to maintain that healthy lifestyle, you don't want to go back. Now, I'm going to date myself a little bit here, but when infomercials first came out, there was a company that had a sales pitch for their infomercials. I was a kid, some of you will remember this. Set it and forget it, if you remember that. I wish that were true for energy conservation. And I will confess, my first year as an energy specialist, I asked that question, well, what happens when we, you know, we get that ideal savings? What do we do? I've learned now that that's when the real work just begins. Because you can set it, but you cannot forget it. And because you have kept the weight off, so to speak, for so many years consecutively, Synergistic wants to recognize that as a Best in Class program. So here to present that is Client Manager Ashton Whitley. Ashton has been here before. He oversees clients in this part of the country, one of which is San Angelo. And he's accompanied by Carrie DeBose from the home office. And also from the home office, Mr. Lynn Pace is with us this evening. So here to present the Best in Class Award is Ashton.
Thank you, Robert. Thanks, everybody. You guys have superstars as an energy specialist team here. Steve and Robert work very hard, day in and day out, and do an excellent job. I just want to talk about the success of the program and talk about a dedicated partnership over the eight-plus years. This has helped create healthier, more energy-efficient buildings for San Angelo School District, earning you guys the Best in Class recognition, something other districts across the country strive to do. Through the leadership of the board, Dr. Detloff, Dr. Brandon, Mr. Kennedy, and the energy specialists, active collaboration with the district supervisors from custodial, nutritional services, project management, building leadership, and staff. The district has, like Robert and Steve just said, realized 38% in the energy use reduction and total cost savings of over 8.6 million dollars. We want to thank the maintenance and operations team, as they are relied on daily as part of this team, to achieve these goals and ensure that San Angelo is Best in Class. We also want to recognize the efforts of each building in the district for their site and energy use reduction, environmental impact, and program performance.
Good evening, I'm Carrie DeBose. It is my honor to present the Best in Class Award. This recognizes San Angelo ISD's conservation efforts. You have conserved the nation's most precious resources, and you've done this by implementing the energy program, by optimizing your energy use, and by being an example of good energy stewardship when it comes to conserving energy for all districts across the nation to see. So in addition to the Best in Class Award, we also are presenting a check to you for $5,000. And this is to go towards scholarships for San Angelo ISD. So thank you for your partnership. If we could get a picture. That would be great if we could.
Thank you so much, Synergistic, for your contribution. We are proud to congratulate and celebrate Bradford Elementary Assistant Principal, Michelle Beers, on being named Region 15 Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. The award recognizes school leaders who are committed to student learning and achievement through exceptional school leadership. Ms. Beers' dedication to her students and staff is evident through the critical role she plays in ensuring student success at Bradford. Principal Bertha Carrasco noted that Ms. Beers is dedicated, compassionate, and action-oriented. Ms. Beers is the shining example of how our people make the difference and a direct reflection of the San Angelo ISD educated profile. Please join me in congratulating her on this accomplishment. Ms. Beers, if you'd please join Dr. Detloff up in the front for a photo.
He's been really patient. Then after a family photo, Ms. Carrasco, if you'll come up. Aw, he's really wanted his mama. Ms. Carrasco, Ms. Beers, just really quick, one of the two of you. Thank you. Ms. Beers, that sweet baby, really wants you. Again, congratulations. Lincoln Middle School, thank you guys so much for your patience. It is such a great honor when we have so many students and staff to recognize. We think that is a great sign of all the great things happening in San Angelo ISD. But we know you guys have been waiting for quite some time. So again, thank you for your patience. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, we are ecstatic to recognize Lincoln Middle School's leadership team and staff for earning the national distinction, and that was correct, the national distinction, as a Texas school to watch. Lincoln's leadership team is Mr. Joe Gondar, Principal. Mr. Gondar? If you'll go ahead and come forward, please. Mrs. Marissa Guerrero, Associate Principal. Jaime Guerrero, Assistant Principal. Kim Elkins, Assistant Principal. Lacey DeVall, Assistant Principal. Caitlin Weimers, Instructional Coach. Erica Delagarza, Counselor. Beth McAda, Counselor. Michelle Dai, At-Risk Coordinator. Dr. Detloff, could you come forward for a picture? And we'll first do a picture with Dr. Detloff and the leadership team. It'll just be a little easier for pictures. And guys, please, y'all didn't stand out there the whole time. I promise y'all are going to come forward for a picture, too. Thank you. A Texas school to watch is a school that consistently has moved to meet the nationally endorsed criteria for high-performing middle schools. One that has made marked progress in meeting all of these criteria, including measurable gains and the academic achievement of all students over time, and is committed to continuous improvement. These schools will serve as models and mentors for other schools seeking to improve. On Tuesday, April 25th, at 5:00 p.m., we will be recognizing Lincoln further with a community celebration. Board members, all of you received your personal invitation for this community celebration, and we hope you'll be able to join us. At this time, if our Lincoln staff that are present, if you two could come forward, this is kind of like class picture day, but on a larger scale. So we're going to have to widen this a little bit. This is when our communication team will kind of order you guys around, because we're going to take one big Lincoln Tri picture for being a Texas school to watch. Again, another round of applause. Now, this is just like, if all our athletic teams can do this, we're going to start right here with Sean. And Sean, you have to lead the group. You turn this way and go around to shake the board members' hands. It's one big circle. You've seen it a million times. So you're going to lead the way and come right around and lead the way. We want to give you guys a handshake for this distinction. Congratulations for a job well done. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, for our final recognition for the evening, we are excited to close out with our first recognition since San Angelo ISD has been participating in what's referred to as the Principal Institute. And that is honoring Austin Elementary's leadership team and staff for earning what's referred to as a Schools Transforming Learning Distinction and Designation. Austin is under the leadership of Mrs. Brooke Collenbach, Principal. Mrs. Collenbach, if you'd please come forward. Ms. April Johnson, Assistant Principal. Christian Godfrey, Instructional Coach. Mrs. Jessica Riddle, Counselor. And again, these staff members had to wait quite an extended period. So the staff that is here with us this evening, if you two would please come forward and join your leadership team. And Dr. Detloff, if you would come forward for a picture. We are making sure you're getting your steps in as part of our SAISD Wellness Plan. Thank you. Okay, y'all stay for just a second, I'm going to keep bragging on you, okay? Because we have to hear about this being the first time we've had an SAISD campus receive this award. Now in its 13th year, the Principals Institute, which is referred to as PI, it's a year-long professional development series. This professional development series builds the skills of campus leaders to sharpen their skills and develop the knowledge required to lead and build the campus leaders' skills required to sustain transformation over time. This began in the 2016-2017 school year, where they launched Schools Transforming Learning and the Designation Program. STL is designed to honor and showcase the work of campuses that are led by either current or former Principal Institute participants. Ms. Brooke Collenbach, as part of her learning, is participating this year. And even though we've participated as part of PI for 10 years, Ms. Collenbach and her campus is the first campus to receive this designation. So we want to take a look and learn more, but we also need to give recognition where recognition is due. So as always, Jack Wilcox is behind the scenes, so we want to give Jack a shout-out for capturing this magic. And Molly from our communications team, because they are our team members that bring all this together. Becky's going to pull up the video, and let's look at what these Austin Bulldogs do on a daily basis.
Welcome to Austin Elementary. Welcome to Austin Elementary.
We are excited to share our school with you.
Welcome to Austin Elementary.
We are excited to share our school with you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Collenbach, the Principal of Austin Elementary. We are one of 17 elementary schools in San Angelo ISD, and we currently serve 350 students in grades early childhood, special ed, through fifth grade. With our district's strong focus in developing a community-based accountability system and a learner profile, we've been given the perfect tools to develop the vision for our campus. Working with parents, staff, and students, we have adopted the vision Empower to Learn, Empower to Lead. We believe the definition of empower as making someone stronger and more confident, especially in controlling their life and claiming their rights. This is the perfect direction to accomplish the hopes and dreams of our community. Come check out the good things happening at Austin. Our guidelines for success, be safe, be kind, be ready to learn, are the foundation for the kind of people we want to be. We celebrate our students following these guidelines through the use of brag boards. Students love watching their classroom board fill up so they can help the campus reach our goal and earn a celebration. We are a capturing kids' hearts campus, so you'll see students being greeted at the door, sharing good things, and providing affirmations for each other. Our campus affirmations happen each Friday when we give our PAWS shout-outs. These shout-outs can be given to anyone by simply scanning the QR codes in the hallway and completing the Google form.
Our PLC time together is vital for our campus. It's a vehicle for change. to see outside of themselves, to realize they're part of a larger community. To gain more student voice, we began a student council. Students campaigned and were elected to office. Student council has been instrumental in finding ways to celebrate teachers, gather supplies for a local charity, and they're currently taking student applications for a Bulldog Market where we'll help students learn business skills while still impacting their community.
My name is Delia.
And I'm Maddie.
And we're student council. Today, we're talking about the Austin Elementary Bulldog Market. People will be bringing handmade items from home and donating 20% of their profit to the Austin Activity Fund. We hope that they learn small business skills and how to help others in our community.
We worked hard to develop community partnerships by applying for grants to host events such as Family Literacy Night and an art show. We also have had community support in stocking our little library in the front of the school. These strong community partnerships and support from our families also help as we host events like the grand event for Grandparents' Day and our school color run. Color Run is a great campus favorite for families and sends them off each year to celebrate spring break. All of this work is done to help our students accomplish their hopes and dreams. Our dedicated staff and clear vision and goals help keep us moving forward so that we can accomplish our vision: empower to learn, empower to lead.
So once again, please join me in congratulating Austin for earning this distinguished honor.
I guess we're through. These are the meetings that I know it takes a lot of time, and I appreciate those that are probably already left now that we're so patient waiting, but the rest of you that are still waiting, we appreciate your patience. But for the board, these times of the year, really the highlights that we do enjoy, all the recognition and all the handshakes, because that really shows that work that we've been talking about all year, it kind of comes to fruition when we see the results that our students and administrators are accomplishing. We really do have a district to be proud of. Okay, we'll go on with our regular agenda, or at least get started on it. We have minutes that we need to approve from March 20, 2023, our special meeting pre-agenda workshop, and March 27, 2023, our regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have two motions. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Dinnell, a second by Mr. Gai, goes as to this agenda items, any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no, motion passes. All right, now we have what I mentioned when I was going through my script earlier. For those of you that are still here, that have been patient, wanting to give public comment on some item that's not on our agenda this meeting, I have four people that have signed up. And I will appreciate you filling out these forms. This is the first time we've used this particular form, and it looks like everybody did a great job on that. So I will tell you to come up, but let me just mention, as I said before, because this hasn't been posted by state law, it's something we're going to discuss tonight, we're not allowed to comment. I don't want you to feel, have any feelings hurt. We're not allowed to comment other than just say thank you for coming forward. So I'll start off first, it looks like Berta Carrasco.
Thank you so much for having us today. It was such a sweet celebration, just to be able to be a part of seeing all the students come through. There was a lot of Bradford students in that group, so it just made my heart proud and the North Side way to represent. So thank you all. I'm here to speak to you about our bilingual program, and I also invite you to come to our campus. For next year, we are so excited about joining our two schools, Glenmore and Bradford, as a bilingual program. This is something that we need. For Bradford, we have pre-K students, we have 13. Glenmore has nine students. For Kinder for Bradford, we have 23 little ones, and Glenmore has 10. First grade, we have 24 students, we got a new one today, and Glenmore has 15 students. For second grade, we have 18 students, and Glenmore has 10. And next year, we will grow the program to have third grade also. So as you can tell, our bilingual program is growing, not just for Bradford, not for Glenmore, but these are our students. We are here for them and for our district. So we are excited about having more teachers to be able to balance our classrooms and have that opportunity to share and be able to invite more families into our schools. Our students at Bradford are not just students from Bradford, these students are throughout the district. So again, we want to make sure that our community is aware of this program and that we're there to serve them. We do have like seven classrooms that are empty, so we have plenty of space for the additional classrooms as well. One of the things that I am so proud of here in San Angelo, this is my 21st year with our district, and one of my dreams has always been to have a bilingual campus. And to be able to see that happen is truly a blessing. At Bradford, I've been there, this is my 11th year, and our students are great. It has been amazing, the transformation, what the students have been able to do, and to be able to have our teachers empower them each and every single day. But it is, I can't explain what it's like having a bilingual program and not having one. Before, I always thought, oh my goodness, those little Spanish speakers are so quiet, they're so shy. And they're different. It is such a different opportunity for them. When you walk into their classrooms, they're participating, they have the confidence, they put on performances, and those kids are dancing, they're singing, they're playing with all their peers. I never got to see that in the past. And that's something that we cannot, we can't take away from them. We have to build and build upon their culture and what they are comfortable speaking at home, and transfer that into empowering them to be citizens and to be successful here in the United States, in our communities. So again, I want to invite you to come to our campus. I want you to go into the bilingual classrooms. I want you to see how the classrooms run, and also visit our other classrooms too. You will see the excitement in the students, you will see the passion that our teachers have for our students, and again, not just the bilingual, but all students. I hope that you know that at Bradford, we love all of our kids, and our community is very important to us. Also with their, one of the things we talk about is definitely we're there to serve, but also their academics. We are also, and we test all of our students, just like everybody else in the district, but to be able to see how much growth they have made from the beginning, how they're learning English and how they're progressing, it's exciting. It's really exciting. So again, I thank you for the opportunity, and please know that we are committed as a district and as a campus to serve all students.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Thank you for, as a teacher also. Next is, is it Malia Taylor?
Malia.
Malia, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I'm a lot taller than she is. We're a package deal, but I am just a lot taller. I'm Malia Taylor, I'm the school counselor at Bradford Elementary School. And Ms. Carrasco and I, we kind of go hand in hand, we're kind of a package deal. We've been together for, I think, nine years now at Bradford. I've been there since before we had the bilingual program, just like she has, and been there as we started it in pre-K only, and then have added a grade level each year to that bilingual program. What I wanted to talk to you guys about is that, how students qualify for this program. It's all based on the Home Language Survey, and a lot of families don't know that. So I look at every student's, every incoming student's Home Language Survey. It asks, what is this, what language does the student speak, and what language is spoken at home? If either one of those languages is Spanish or any other language but English, we automatically test those students. And we use a state norm reference test, all of this, everything I'm saying is part of Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 89. I get three trainings a year in that, three full-day trainings a year in all of this for LPAC meetings. And so that's really hard to condense into five minutes. So if a student does not, is not proficient in English, they're considered an emergent bilingual. And so they, by default, if their native language is Spanish, will qualify for our bilingual program. We are required to provide a bilingual program for those students because we have more than 20 students in one grade level with the same language across the district. The goal of the bilingual education is to enable English learners to become proficient in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in the English language through the development of literacy and academic skills in the primary language and English. So these students, the goal is to make them proficient in English, but we're embracing their native language. Just like Ms. Carrasco said, I used to see these students sit at the back of the class, they wanted to go unnoticed, they wanted to back into the wall, they wanted to hide. And now they're engaged, they're coming up to me. I don't actually speak Spanish, Ms. Carrasco is fluent. I understand enough to get me in trouble. And so these students are coming up to me, and they're speaking to me in Spanish, and I'm slowly developing Spanish through the students that I serve. And we are here to serve them, just like Ms. Carrasco said. I would love to sit down with anyone who has questions or concerns about the bilingual program. I will explain the program to you, I'll explain the laws and the meetings we have. We actually pull parents into campus up to three times a year. So every student has an initial LPAC where we pull the parent in after we've tested them and they've qualified for the program. That's for initial identification. And then in the middle of the year, we have a state assessment LPAC meeting. That is to go over potential STAR accommodations and make decisions with the parent and the teachers over the student's STAR testing. And then at the end of the year, this is the time of year, I look forward to this, everybody's like, you have 136 meetings to have, and I do. I love every single one of those meetings. This is the time of year we talk about student progress and their program placement for the next school year. Parents can opt out of the bilingual program and choose the ESL program if they want to. It's my job as a school counselor to advocate for kids and make sure parents make informed decisions. And just like Ms. Carrasco said, we love every one of our kids. We are honored to have this program. I'm blessed to work with these families, all of my families really. And I thank you for your time and all of your service as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and thank you for your service. Gabriela Gaspar?
Good evening. My name is Gabriela Gaspar. I am a parent of Alan Gutierrez. He is a student of the bilingual program at Glenmore Elementary. And I am also the marketing and business administrator of Conexión San Angelo. I'm here today because, as Ms. Carrasco mentioned, the program is going to be, or we were informed that the program was going to be moved over to Bradford, which was something that we were informed kind of at last minute during kind of the enrollment period. And, you know, we feel like it was very shocking to us because of the fact that some of us parents live on the opposite side of Bradford, which it makes it a little bit difficult for us to go from where we are, which my area is Santa Rita Drive, to Bradford. And not only for, not only that, the program is amazing. My son has learned how to speak, write, everything in Spanish. But also that learning has helped him transition into learning English like that. And so for us parents, it's a little bit harder because of that situation of the transportation. We know that, we were mentioned in the parent meeting, that there was going to be transportation provided. For some of us parents, that's not an option because it might not work for us, or we're just not comfortable at all with it. So for us, it's a little bit harder, and some parents are choosing to opt out of the program because of this change, which to me seems a bit unfair, just because if we go on the side of, we feel like we are being segregated into just being a bilingual campus. We feel that all schools should have these classrooms, you know, these schools should have this opportunity to know that there is a bilingual program, that there is diversity, that, you know, there is another culture out there. And if we all combine them together, how will these other schools, how will these other students know and learn about our culture as Hispanics and other cultures as well? So yeah, it's a decision that, you know, I would really hope y'all think about, think about the diversity. It's important, it's important for other students to know that, you know, we're bilingual, we speak Spanish. As they mentioned, you know, I was a student that spoke Spanish in school. I didn't have the opportunity, my son has now. And I was that student that was in the back of the class because not everybody knew that, you know, not everybody knew our culture. So it was, it makes me happy that my son gets to experience, that all his classmates, the school knows that there's a school out there. So I would really like y'all to consider, I'm not sure how it works or how y'all go about it, but I would really like for y'all to consider us as parents, not take the program from us because we absolutely love it. Like I said, I know that there's an option to go to Bradford, but for some parents, it's not, it's not an option. When we learned about the program, you know, we were excited, and we chose to be at Glenmore because it was closer to us. And now, you know, we're being told, hey, y'all got to move over there, making it a little bit harder for us as parents to be able to make those arrangements. I would like to thank y'all for y'all's time, and I really hope y'all do consider keeping us at Glenmore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaspar. All right. Vivian Perez?
Dear leaders of the San Angelo ISD Education, my name is Viviana Perez, and my child, Diego Perez, is a
think about the diversity. It's important. It's important for other students to know that, you know, we're bilingual, we speak Spanish. As they mentioned, you know, I was a student that spoke Spanish in school. I didn't have the opportunity, my son has now. And I was that student that was in the back of the class because not, not everybody knew that, you know, not everybody knew our culture. So it was, it, it makes me happy that my, my son gets to experience, that all his classmates, the school knows that there's, there's a school out there. So I would really like y'all to consider. I'm not sure how it works or how y'all go about it, but I would really like for y'all to consider us as parents, not take the program from us because we absolutely love it. Like I said, I know that there's an option to go to Bradford, but for some parents, it's not, it's not an option. When we learned about the program, you know, we were excited and, and we chose to be at Glenmore because it was closer to us. And now, you know, we're being told, hey, y'all got to move over there, making it a little bit harder for us as parents to be able to make those, those arrangements. I would like to thank y'all for y'all's time and I really hope y'all do consider keeping us at Glenmore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaspar. All right. Vivian Perez?
Dear leaders of the San Angelo ISD Education, my name is Viviana Perez and my child, Diego Perez, is a student in the first grade in Ms. Muñoz's class at Glenmore Elementary. He is currently enrolling the bilingual program, which has given my son the opportunity to flourish as he learns to read and write in both languages. I strongly believe that bilingual education is a wonderful, wonderful aspect of lifelong learning. Research shows that dual language programs where children learn both Spanish and English are especially helpful for Latino English learner, language learners. The reason I am here is because I don't agree with the decision that was made to have the bilingual program only at Bradford Elementary. I have talked to several parents from the bilingual program at Glenmore who strongly disagree with the decision also. I was, it was never taken into consideration, the parents' opinions and how this change will affect not only the children, but the community. This new change does not fit with a, with a lot of our schedules. We have other children that have to be taken to different schools. This is one reason most parents have to take, have to make the hard decision to remove their children from the program. It also puts our children at risk to fall behind next year because they were supposed to transition from Spanish to English and now they will have to be in an all-English class classifying them as an ESL at their home campus. Most of the kids don't know how to read and write English like a regular non-bilingual class. This change will definitely have a negative impact on their education. Having the bilingual program only at one campus for all the San Angelo ISD reduces the options for the parents who do want to have their children be part of the program. When the program first started, me and my husband made the decision to buy our first home near Glenmore Elementary so our son had the opportunity to be part of the bilingual program, as well as for our other two children who are still under the age of three. I was really looking forward for them to develop comprehensive abilities in both languages. Now that has been taken away from them because this change does not work for us. I know there's going to be transportation provided, but even with that, it is something that does not work with our schedules because pickup time will be earlier and drop off time later than what it currently is. This put a lot of parents in the same position. It has also been proven that changing schools has a negative impact on children. Children crave stability and when they can't have it, it interferes with their emotional and developmental functioning. Moving to a new school is also stressful for children. They will lose friends and have to adapt to a new schedule and environment. Some of the children are already worried that they won't be able to be with their friends next school year. The kids in Ms. Muñoz's class have been together since preschool. Making the decision to have the bilingual program only at Bradford Elementary also leads me to believe that we continue to have segregated schools. The bilingual program currently only has Hispanics. Bradford already has a higher percentage of Hispanic children compared to Glenmore according to the 2022 School Report Card. It also has a higher poverty level and a lower overall academic performance compared to Glenmore. Having all the children from bilingual program move to a school with that kind of report definitely fits into the segregation term. Numerous studies show that segregating children in schools can negatively impact their academic achievements, especially when they are triple segregated, like in this case. These children will be experienced, these children will experience segregation by ethnicity slash race, socioeconomic and language, because the percentage at Bradford will increase even more. All you have to do is reach for these type of segregations and the negative effects, it has to come to a conclusion that this, that this is what children are going to experience. As leaders of the education that represent our children, we ask you to continue to seek ways to ensure that students across all races, ethnicity and socioeconomic backgrounds have equal access to quality education. This requires addressing the role of segregation and negative impact this will have on, on students' education. This concludes why most of the parents from Glenmore Elementary disagree on the change to the bilingual program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Wendy Costello, Costellano? I'm sorry. Costellano.
I don't have a lot to say. I think they've pretty much explained everything as parents were concerned. Whenever I went to Glenmore, this program was presented to me as a great opportunity. I hesitated a lot. My biggest thing was, okay, they're going to learn English and Spanish, but what's the next step? What is that transition process? As you're hearing, there is no transition process. That was a decision made without our input into it and now my child, which is sitting right there, is going to hurt. I spoke about it and nobody said anything. Next thing you know, we get a letter notified that the program was going to be discontinued in Glenmore. There's nothing bad about Bradford, not about that. I'm 100% with, but both parents said, if you want to be diversified, make sure that all the schools have it. Not just one, that is segregation. Make sure to look up that and take into consideration and take a closer look at those bilingual programs. Because again, it's San Angelo, there's a bigger population of Hispanic. You're going to find people, I promise you that. They found me, I wasn't even looking for it. I did not know of it. If I had known, I would have honestly done it. I took a chance on this program and now they're telling me that, guess what? Oh, it's not going to be in Glenmore anymore. I took a chance for my child to be both English and Spanish and she's doing fantastic. We have two teachers right here that advocate for our children like no one else. My child learned Spanish, English and could communicate both. Not many kids can say that. So please take a closer look at what's going on with the bilingual program and implement those programs across San Angelo. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costellano? Costellano, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here. All right, that's, that's all we have for public comments. We're going to go into reports, but it is, we've been going now, it's eight o'clock. Why don't we take a quick break and then we'll go with the rest of our agenda? So I'm going to take like a five-minute break and we'll be right back. All right, we're going to get started again. Mr. Henry, are you ready with a construction update? You what? Okay, perfect. And Dr. Gomez, do we have any update on academic progress, academic programs?
Mr. Parker, Dr. Deloffa, members of the board, this evening for update on academic programs, we'll be giving an update from our digital innovation facilitators, Jennifer Fekk and Brandon Lagone, around the district's STEM and STEAM programs. And so Ms. Fekk and Mr. Lagone, if you will come up, we, first of all, I'd like to recognize both Mrs. Fekk and Mr. Lagone for all of their work they do district-wide, supporting all of our campuses, all of our educators and all of our students. In fact, for our final CBAS meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, we will be highlighting some of our students and how our students are taking ownership. So they have a video to share with you. We also will close out with our flyer as we open up and launch the summer's STEM camp. So Brandon, Jennifer, do you guys want to start with a video?
Sure.
So sometimes people think that all I do at work is play with toys all day long. I have to justify and explain to my wife that I swear that I'm working and my children are always like, what fun toys are you going to bring home for us to play with that? And it looks like playing, it looks like a good time, but what also is happening during these times and with these activities and with the devices and everything that we have in our STEM and STEAM labs, there's so much problem solving that goes on in that and there is a lot of critical thinking, collaboration and so many components of our learner profile when we put our students in these situations. And it's so amazing to see that certain things look so complicated to the adult mind because we see these things and we're like, oh goodness, what is that? And our students just pick up on them and they're coding, they are building structures, they are talking about things, they are failing, learning from that failure and then readjusting their plan and going back in and attacking the challenge again. And that's the beauty of it. We'd like to see failure in our STEM labs and all in our STEM activities because it's building character and it's building that resistance that our students need in life. And whether they fall into a category in the future, in a STEM-related job or things like that, they're still building those characteristics that are going to make them successful in everything that they do. So we're super excited to provide these opportunities with our students and all of our campuses. And that's the most amazing thing is that STEM is going on on all of our campuses. It looks different ways because there's different ways to do it. And it's really cool to just see the students gravitate to however it's being presented to them and they run with it, whether it's in their classroom, whether it's in a lab, whether it's, there are just so many different possibilities and Jennifer and I do what we can to support our teachers and our students growing in that STEM category. And so I'm going to turn it on over to Ms. Jennifer Fekk as she tells you about our STEM camp that's coming up that we're super excited about. We've got a couple of people in the audience that help us out in that. I see you over there. Oh yeah, oh yeah. So real excited about that.
Jennifer, take it away.
So we're going, we're getting ready to start our seventh year of our SAICD STEM Kids Camp. It keeps getting bigger and better every year. We're so excited. This year, we do have our flyer that went live today along with our website with more detailed information. It will be July 12th and 13th at Buie Elementary this summer. We've, we're able to add a few more due to the purchase of the Louvre from last year, which our 17 elementaries have had a blast with the interactive playground that was purchased last year. We're bringing it to STEM camp, we're adding some drones, makey makey. And as always, we have teachers who give their time during the summer to facilitate these rotations. And Ms. LaBrassa from Lincoln, she's been with us seven straight years facilitating programs. So we're glad to even have middle school teachers join in with our elementary students. It is open to the current second through fifth graders with the different programs. We service about 200 students every day during these two days. So 200 second, third, fourth and fifth graders one day and then another 200 the second day. So the flyer will also have the link to our website. Registration goes live May 16th at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, so we're looking forward to it.
Do you guys have any questions that we can help answer?
Sorry, I have a question. So we've had a lot of questions about our STEM programs as far as how they look on each campus. So my understanding is some of our STEM programs have STEM teachers and then some of our STEM programs are done within their homeroom classroom? Is that depending, can you kind of explain that, how that works on each campus?
Absolutely. We've got certain, especially I'll say during the COVID period, there was a unique way to include that in their special areas time. So a lot of campuses went PE, music and then STEM. And once, and library, yeah, absolutely. It was all that together. And a lot have still kind of used that structure with a little bit of modifications due to other things. So they still include that STEM in their rotation. Now, what the STEM lab was even presented to in the very, very beginning was to provide all these materials. There's so many different things that could be utilized in reading, in math, in science, all of those things. And so we have all those materials on the campus. And so some campuses that don't necessarily have the STEM rotation are able to check out the materials, they collaborate with us and they're like, hey, I'm teaching energy, what can I do with that? And we're like, well, have you looked into Lego Spike? And then we'll get with them and show them the activity that goes along with that, work in their classrooms with the kids, with the Legos to tie that into that so that they're recognizing, oh wow, okay, I can do STEM in the classroom. We're actually even doing a Learning Palooza session this summer that is encouraging and showing teachers more ways that they can incorporate the STEM activities within their classroom. And so that goes with the coding. We have got them retelling stories by coding. You saw the little B-Bot on there. They will retell the story and code the bot to tell the different pieces of the story. So those are just unique ways that teachers are incorporating STEM into their instruction daily.
Sorry, follow-up question. Apologize. So if you have a campus that you don't feel like has been reaching out to you about how are they putting this into their curriculum, are y'all reaching out to those campuses to making sure they're utilizing the materials that we have purchased?
Absolutely. We're in there all the time and we're contacting them. We, along with our iPad initiative, we're in there and we're working with students on that and really just melding all of these things together and just showing like, you can do this and this together and you're killing two birds with one stone and knocking all of those things out. So definitely, we are always there as a support and things. We've reached out to leadership, leadership has reached out to us. We, when somebody new has come on board, they're like, all right, so we've got somebody new that's going to be manning our STEM labs and we need you guys to help train and get them supported to get that part taken care of. And so we have a whole lot of resources that are available online to them through our little groups that we have set up for them to reach out for these resources that are provided. They print them out, they do them. And Jennifer and I are constantly modeling lessons, going into the classrooms, manning those things, participating in the STEM nights. Wherever we can be a presence to help our teachers feel empowered and our students be able to feel comfortable in these situations, that's what we do.
Dr. Keeman, just really quick to add on that. As we are preparing to roll out our summer professional learning on April 29th, we've been going through the offerings. And so STEM offerings for professional and paraprofessional staff are centered around STEM as well. Also, as we are in the middle of staffing conversations with our campuses, Dr. Skelton, Dr. Self, Dr. Brandon, we've been going through their general fund staffing formulas for campuses, as you guys are well aware. As we have special funding, we just met last Friday afternoon, I'm looking at Dr. Skelton and Dr. Self and Dr. Brandon here, and we were reviewing some special funding for some campuses that might not be staffed for general funds, but they have additional special funds to see, can we support here for special funds to put in for a STEM paraprofessional to help assist in this? For campuses that don't have the ability to run STEM as part of their rotations. Because we know, and we've had a lot of conversations with the board, with teachers already having very full plates to put STEM on top of other requirements on the curriculum, how can we remove some things and put it as part of the rotation? So there's other type of conversations we're involved in right now. I'm sorry, Pam?
I was just going to say that Brandon and Ms. Fekk do a phenomenal job. And what I appreciated the most was the excitement that both of you bring when you're asked to come into a classroom. It's not, I mean, you're excited and I was there when you would like ask a teacher, can I come? So I appreciate not only being there, but the excitement and enthusiasm and just the happy happiness that when you do come, that you bring.
Okay, now I couldn't get my button to work. Hi. I know how to do this. Um, just a quick question. Um, so, I know, so I know that our STEM programs are great in our elementary schools and I, um, and I know that there is a STEM elective in middle school. Um, and I just, my, um, my son has not partaken in any STEM in high school. So, I was just wondering what kinds of STEM opportunities we have in high school?
Well, glad that you asked that, um, because, um, there's actually a ton of opportunities that we have in our middle schools. Um, our cybersecurity initiative that's been really big right now, we've really, um, it's, there's a lot of big words and there are a lot of that that just goes completely over my head. And then when you get in the zone with students who this really resonates with, you're like, wow, we hit jackpot with this right here. And students are definitely really excited and just kind of seeing that grow, um, from even just last year to this year and just visiting with the kids that we got onboard with this last year and talking to them this year about like how it's been and how fun it's been and how they really have found where they, uh, their calling. Um, that's been really good. And even, I will say, we had a, a little clip on there from the Minecraft, um, which again is another one of those things that looks like a game and it could be considered, but, uh, we've got some, especially in our secondary at Lakeview, uh, we've got some teachers that have taken the Minecraft and put that into their math instruction. And it has just been phenomenal, the type of things that they've done. We had, uh, we assembled a cohort of Minecraft, uh, teachers that were interested in incorporating Minecraft in their classroom. And, um, we were trained by Minecraft specialists. And just to see the response and just how that's been put into the classrooms now has been great. So, that's been another one of the, uh, the things that we've definitely seen a lot in the middle school, as well as along with our iPad initiative and everybody in the one-to-one and the iPad situation, um, they too are incorporating that technology and that STEM within activities and creations and products that they're making in their classrooms.
So, also along with the high school, um, we had quite a few high school teachers that participated in that Minecraft cohort that are continuing that work with the Minecraft EDU. We have, uh, several high school teachers that have picked up on the drones and are in drone competitions, using it in their physics classes, chemistry classes, uh, with some of that computer science. You know, we continue to try to grow the computer science program, um, and different things, working with Ms. Ventress with CTE programs, just to kind of keep building that momentum K through 12 with all the opportunities out there for our students. Uh, as along with Cyber Patriots, which is a new competition, uh, for middle school, our ROTCs have been competing for the last couple of years, but now we've been able to add our middle schools, uh, with the Cyber Patriot, uh, competition too with that. And then started our fifth grade with the card game, um, in April. So, you know, we just try to keep, continue to grow it and keep it going.
Thank you so much. Um, Amy, I think that, um, I was thinking this weekend about, uh, Mr. Waters did a thing a couple of years ago, what is your thing? And I think with STEM, we're introducing it to our elementaries, all elementaries. And then we offer it in middle school. And then by the time they get to high school, if it is their thing, then they find it in places. Some kids, it's not their thing, okay? And so, um, I think we do a good job of giving all the elementaries of what it is. Then in middle school, they can take it as the elective. And then in high school, we integrate it, but for some kids by that time, maybe it's not their thing. And so, they choose to go other routes. Um, I just like the fact that a child can choose. It might be your thing, just like band might be your thing, football might be your thing, STEM might be your thing.
Yeah, Pam, I was just going to say, um, that's so true. And I try to tell our kids, um, because I am terrible at putting my to- my children's toys together and things like that. Christmas time, you get the instructions and it's all of those things. And I'm like, man, I wish I had STEM back when I was your age, because I might have been able to follow these instructions and get this put together, because these toys are complicated these days. And so, even if STEM is not your thing, being able to take pieces and put them together is a skill that I promise you, you will need at some point. I say, don't be like me and be struggling, have to really take your time and get that thing together. We're going to start them off young so that they can really be able to put their kids' Christmas toys together and anything else that they have that comes their way.
Brandon, and, uh, is there like a, like when they get to the high school level and STEM, um, is there like UIL competitions and stuff like that they have that they can get involved with?
I know the ROTC participated in some drone competitions. We are looking into robotics, uh, updating robotics competitions. So, there are some competitions that we're, uh, looking at and seeing if we can't update for the high schools to participate in.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, guys. Thanks for being patient. Thanks for whatever you've been taking out there in the audience to have this much energy at this time to come up here, so. Yeah, appreciate you. Okay, Dr. Detloff, um, partnership with Good Fellow Air Force Base?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, members of the board. Uh, Molly Turk, uh, will take us through some of, uh, the incredible efforts, uh, made in conjunction with Good Fellow Air Force Base and our students. And we continue those strong partnerships. And I believe, uh, Molly will be discussing Operation Kids, and then we'll segue, uh, to another, uh, special program we have. So, Molly, it's all you. Thank you.
Of course. So, tonight for our Good Fellow, uh, uh, update, we are excited to discuss some partnerships with Good Fellow Air Force Base through their Operation Kids event and the Starbase STEM program for fifth graders, as well as Starbase 2.0, which was launched this year at Lincoln Middle School. So, Operation Kids is an event hosted by Good Fellow, which gives children the opportunity to gain greater understanding of what it is like to be deployed military servicemen through fun, safe, and engaging mock military activities. Operation Kids returned after a brief hiatus due to the COVID-19 pandemic this October. Elementary students have the opportunity to report to the Advanced Deployment Center on Good Fellow and receive mock deployment orders and experience their deployment activities through stimulated real-world events. Uh, Central High School and Lakeview High School JROTC cadets assisted Good Fellow, uh, representatives through those mock activities and got to get that experience again for themselves if that was what interested them. Good Fellow will be hosting their second Operation Kids this year on Saturday, April 29th. Um, and they've invited SAISD elementary students from Glenmore, Bel Air, Bonham, Holloman, and Lamar to participate again, since they are some of our most military-connected campuses. And Central ROTC will be involved to serve in leadership roles during that event. Y'all have any questions about Operation Kids? Wonderful. In 2018, Good Fellow introduced the Starbase program. Um, and we have our great friend, Mr. Tim Maddox, he's the Assistant Director for Starbase, and he's here to give us more information on the program.
Alrighty, so, just going to update you guys on some of our numbers up to date. Uh, as of this year, we were able to give 966 SISD students 25 hours of science, technology, engineering, and math. We are just not limited to SISD, so we just hit, as of this week, 1,450 students in about a 40-mile radius around San Angelo. And we have just passed 8,300 students total for our time operating. Uh, we just launched our 2.0 program at Lincoln Middle School. Uh, I've been teaching for about seven years, starting with college-aged kiddos and working my way to fifth graders, and neither of those prepared me particularly well for middle schoolers, as it turns out. It's a whole different crowd. So, luckily, I have the amazing support of Caitlin LaBrasser. She was very crucial to getting this program started at Lincoln. Uh, we do have a small crowd of about nine kids that have whittled down to about seven over the course of the semester. But we are hosting our first graduation of our first class, uh, this Wednesday at 5:30 at Lincoln. Uh, the kids are learning drones for this particular 2.0 program, and we do hope to expand into other fields such as 3D printing and beyond, uh, once we get this more established. Uh, we also have some summer camps that are coming up for our students here. They are free summer camps and we are offering four of them. We have two STEM camps for fourth through sixth graders. And then we also have our very first 3D printer camp that is going to be for slightly older crowd, fifth through seventh. And we will have our first collaborative effort with the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, offering the Science of Clay Camp, and that will also be for our fifth through seventh graders. Uh, you will be able to find information on these camps at our Starbase Good Fellow Facebook page as well as starbasegoodfellow.org. All of our flyers have been posted, and we encourage you, if you would like to register, to make sure you're on in the correct date because they do fill up quite quickly. That is my little update. If you guys have any questions about Starbase Good Fellow, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I'd also just like to say thank you because on all occasions, Mr. Maddox, Ms. LaBrasser, they're willing to step in, offer PL, um, whenever our campuses are doing STEM night, um, whenever we're doing Learning Palooza, they're presenting at Learning Palooza. It was just out at Bowie. It seems like a couple of weeks ago, it's probably more than a couple of weeks ago, it's all just kind of a blur. Um, but the, the gist is, they're just so willing to help. And so, truly, thank you for always being there to educate and share regardless of the group. And listen, middle school, it's a calling, they grow on you, so don't let them scare you away. We love them. Thank you sincerely.
All right. Every year, um, board members are required to get, um, continuing education, um, in regard to board training. Uh, we've done that again this year, and I will go through this quickly just to, uh, mention that, um, for each of the board members, we, we are required, I think it's, uh, that we need to have seven hours. And, um, that could be in, uh, part of it, which is two hours, is required by the State Board of Education, school safety training. All board members have gotten their two hours in that safety training. And then we're required to get five additional hours of continuing education, and all board members have exceeded that. The totals, there's Lupi- Lupita has 12.5 total hours, Bill Dendel 11.5, Pam Duncaner has 10 total hours, Gerard has 17, Dr. Kingman has 9.5. Our, I have, Max Parker has 11.5, and our star, Amy Mazel Flint, has 37.25. Uh, so, she wins the prize this year for, uh, she gets to go to Star Camp Free and we're pretty- And STEM class. Get her some, get her some Legos, yep. Yes, and the Fine Arts presentation, yes. So, we do appreciate, uh, all, I appreciate on behalf of the board, uh, President of the Board, I appreciate all our board members, uh, working hard to and exceeding the limit and, um, helping us to be the board that we are by making sure we're getting the training that we get. So, and I do appreciate when Amy comes back, the things that she brings us and shares with the rest of the board. So, um, she, some of your hours, or most of your extra hours were in Washington DC, isn't that great, Amy? So, why don't you just mention quickly what you do in Washington DC?
So, um, every year, um, that I've gone, we, there have been some pretty key issues that they talk about. Um, a lot of, a lot of it is asking for funding for certain programs that, um, that comes down to the local level. And so, um, always STEM, uh, not STEM, I'm sorry, um, IDEA, um, so, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, um, has never been fully funded into the amount that they said that, it was supposed to be fully funded at 40% and it's never reached 40%. So, that, we always talk about that a lot. Um, I think it's Title III that's training for teachers and, um, tho- that, those funds come from the federal level. And so, we learn about that and, um, you know, where those dollars come from and where they go. Uh, we talk a lot about, um, the digital, the digital devices. And so, we've heard from members of the FCC come and speak to us about the importance of, um, digital education in our schools. Um, as you can imagine, um, this is the first year that it was only Texas. Um, this was the Texas legis- the Texas Federal Legislative Update. And in the past, it was, um, it was all the states, uh, we were the national, it wasn't national, but now only TASB is doing it, um, for this year anyway. And so, um, that, um, it's interesting to see the disparity in the amount of digital, um, devices that are available to our schools. And so, we really speak to the legislators, really advocating for schools across Texas for all of those funding opportunities. And there's always more, but those are the ones off the top of my head.
Thank you again. All right. We've got some, uh, items now that we need to vote on. Our first is our consent items. We have consent items A through F. A is consider donations. B is consider acceptance of audit engagement letter from our CPAs and business advisors. Is it Edie, Eddie Bailey? Edie? 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 E-I-D-E, Edie? Okay. Well, those are our CPAs, all right? And, and they help us with our audit each year. Consider bid number 23/012 San Angelo Stadium bleacher replacement. Consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel for school year 2022, 2023. And I think we had some additional ones, uh, there's, that are on our, have been given to us on our, by the podium, or by our desk today. Can, um, consider two superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2023 and 2024. And consider superintendent's recommendation for 2023, 2024 teacher and other professional contracts. So, we have three different items for superintendent's recommendations for staff. These are consent items, which means that we discussed these at our pre-agenda workshop last week and put them all together on the consent items, uh, to save a little bit of time. Does anybody want to pull any of these off for further discussion? If not, then do I hear a motion to approve the consent items? I, I will make the motion that we approve consent items A through F as I've outlined.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Kingman. So, motion by Mr. Parker, second by Dr. Kingman. Is there any other board discussion? If, if not, is there any, uh, public comment? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next agenda item is consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for March 2023. Sure, uh- Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dendel and a second by Dr. Kingman. Again, this is something we considered last week, but we always leave on our agenda. Is there any other board discussion?
Sure, just to note, Mr. Parker, those watching on Channel 4, that all these reports have been reviewed in their entirety in the, uh, pre-agenda meeting last week, and they've all been discussed. And also, they can also be found online at our website, saisd.org. There's a Financial Transparency tab on there that you can click on. You can see all these reports down to the last check that we wrote last month.
Thank you, Mr. Dendel. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. And then another, uh, um, financial, um, agenda item, consider proposed amendment for district official budget child nutrition fund. I don't know if anybody's here to speak on this, is that-
It's, Ms. Parker, I, I make the motion to approve that. Uh, it was also discussed in our pre-agenda meeting. It's an addition of some additional funds that we've acquired, uh, to the child nutrition budget. Uh, and technically, the motion- And technically, the motion would be to recommend approval of the child nutrition fund budget. Amendment for April 17, 2023, with an increase in revenue and expenditures in the amount of $51,044.37, which basically is a grant that we got funded through that for our food service.
I will second that item. So we had a motion by Mr. Dindal, second by Mr. Parker. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Mr. Henry's now up. We've got two different bids that we need to discuss. First is consider bid number 23-009 for Fanning Elementary Classroom Edition.
During our February board meeting, the board took action to combine the attendance zones containing Altaloma and Fanning Elementarys. This action moved all students to the Fanning Elementary campus. Within the sustainability plan, it was determined that the current facility could house all students, but the addition of classrooms would be the first phase of updating this campus. This 10,795-square-foot addition will be, will add eight modern classrooms adjoining the 97 Classroom Edition. It will also add a collaboration area, new student and staff restrooms, a new drive and drop-off area with additional parking, and a campus-wide fire alarm update. With the assistance of Park Hill Architects, an RFP was prepared for companies qualified to do this type of construction. Bids were received from four companies qualified to perform the work needed. References were checked, and subcontractors lists were reviewed. The scoring criteria was applied, and Justice Construction not only received the highest score, but also the lowest price of $4,244,384 for the base bid and alternate one. Tonight, we have two people from Park Hill Architects. We have engineer Jake Wyatt, who's here. He's actually a 2000 graduate of Central High School. And then we also have Jeff Reed here with us, and he's going to go ahead and review the plan with you real quick over what we're doing at Fanning Elementary.
Hey, Jason. Thank you, board. Just a quick update tonight, as Jason went through with the proposals that we received. This is just a quick little snippet of the breakdown between that with what we do on a scoring criteria when we get those proposals from the contractors. We put those into a spreadsheet, and we've got formulas in the background that are tabulating as we put those in. And as Jason indicated, Justice Construction with the lowest bid on that, and also the evaluation subcontractors, and reviewing all of the contractor's information that comes as part of the proposal, the recommendation that Jason made for Justice Construction tonight on that. Afforded that 4.224, is that right? On that, and that also has, that covers the total project cost that we've been talking about all along. A member of the district set aside, I think a total of about $20 million for the two projects. On that, so right now, Fanning was at a $5 million budget. We're still under that with all of the AE fees, all of our soft costs, and even allowances for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Basically, if you turn the building upside down, whatever kind of fell out of it, that's what we put in the FFNE on that for it. Still running under budget. Again, Justice Construction, they've got a couple of projects in Cross Plains, Winters ISD, the Abilene Christian Schools and their, Hendrick. And then also, they've been working here in the city of San Angelo. And sometimes you get local subs, and sometimes you don't. I think a majority, we've got from the San Angelo area. If not, they'll be in some of the surrounding communities to come in. We'll see. That's just a snapshot of the floor plan that we ended up with on the project. There is, Jason talked about, on the 97 addition, going directly to the north of that with this addition. See that fighter corridor that's in the middle? I know as we talked recently in some executive sessions, there could be possible future additions to the campus, and that will just help link possibly any additions that the district decide to move forward. Just an aerial image of addition there. You'll see the more white roof on that that picks that up, and that's just, top of that is just where the existing gymnasium is. Another bird's eye view of what that's going to look like.
I appreciate you staying and presenting that for us. Was there anyone else have any questions? If not, do I hear any, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to use Justice, just want to make sure I have the name right, Justice Construction for a price of $4,244,384 and alternate one.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Mr. Dindal, to approve the administrator's recommendation for the construction of Fanning Classroom Edition. The Justice Construction is outlined. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Again, we'd like to thank Park Hill. They've been here every week for months, helping us with this, and we're just getting, we'll get started with Fanning, and then we'll be coming back to do more work at McGill. All right, Mr. Henry, bid number 22-027, access control.
In the original access control RFP, vendors were asked if they would perform additional access control and security work at a negotiated price throughout the district. Alterman agreed to the addition of the work. With the assistance of Crux, a list of doors and hardware to be added was compiled, and plans were drawn by Crux. These plans included adding 75 access control doors to the following campuses, Lakeview High School, Lincoln Middle School, Lone Star Middle School, and Glenn Middle School. In addition to access control, we will be adding 132 halo detectors to all secondary campuses. These detectors monitor CO2, aggression, glass breaking, vaping, and several other items. Pricing also includes extensive door repairs and toll tag entry for buses at the drop-off at Lakeview High School. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Merle to discuss a little bit of funding.
Sorry, real quick, before we get to funding, Jason, just remind me, Phase 1 and 2, do we, by doing Phase 3, do we end up with access controls and halos at every campus?
Correct.
Include, and we did access control at Central Main as part of Phase?
Phase 1 was Central High School access control. Phase 2 is all the elementary. Phase 3 would be remaining secondary access control, and then adding halos to Central.
And all the middle school. Just a second. Thank you.
And Dr. Brandon, would you also elaborate again also on the halos and what functions those serve for us? Because they serve multiple functions, especially in the restroom areas.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and board members. Mr. Henry has provided a sheet that, that kind of goes into that, but certainly, safety on our secondary campuses, all campuses, but we're starting with the secondary is a factor for the halo sensors. When you think about, you know, vaping, you know, within the restroom, it will pick that up. But also just the safety of if a student was in distress. If they needed help, they could shout, right? It will pick up audible fighting. It will, if somebody screamed in a restroom, maybe that student didn't want to scream, but they wanted to yell chiefs or bobcats even, as loud as they could. The halo device will send an instant message to campus administration, and it will identify the restroom that the halo's in. So we feel like this is going to be a safety item that across the community, our parents will appreciate, our student body as a whole. So we've worked, Mr. Henry, worked very hard to bring this in. So we apologize, this wasn't on your pre-agenda. We've got the bid at late Friday afternoon, about 4:30, so we just missed Friday facts. And so we were trying to, wanted to circle back with you tonight to look at the budgeting, just to kind of keep everybody on the same page of where that's coming from. As the board approved, at the top of that spreadsheet, you've got the one-page spreadsheet, the designated fund balance for construction-related cost of $5 million, just whatever came up through the school year that that would, could go toward. And then we actually have some extra resources. The state, as the school year started through the summer and into the fall, made available the School Safety Formula Grant, so for San Angelo ISD, right at $650,000. The Silent Panic Alert Grant, $44,000, and then the School Safety Allotment. And then Title IV also has a component for safety, health, and wellness. So all of those can be used in any combination towards student safety. So that would bring that total for designated, and then the funding that's already come in this school year in those areas to almost $6 million. But wanted you to see what that was looking like on access controls, Phases 1 and 2 that Dr. Kingman was discussing, and then now in Phase 3 at $990,000. But that does include the halo devices. And then you see fencing. Mr. Henry's almost finished. We're waiting on some permitting for that, for fencing, and then the door repair and replacement. We didn't want to go through and replace access controls on a damaged door. So we've gone every campus, looking at the doors, hinges, hardware, to make sure everything was in working condition as the access controls are put in place. And then the revitalization plan is just to kind of keep us up to date of where that's at, and then what those total expenses. As we go through the next couple of months, we're excited, certainly on the Blackshear campus, as the team has worked, and Dr. Gomez has led that work on Tiny Texans for our staff at Blackshear, and then also the PACE program. So we'll have some, a few things there that we'll touch up with technology, parking, a little bit of refresh on some of that campus. So we'll keep those figures also in front of us. And then we've got one more state mandate on intruder-resistant film that's going to have to go in all of our exterior door entrances and any glass where you could reach a handle to open a door. And so we've, we'll push that bid out probably in May for the intruder-resistant film. And then as soon as that selection is made, then we'll begin that install across the district. We have to have the vendor selected by August 31st, and then that work can continue into next school year. Questions on the budgeting part? Mr. Henry's going to kind of take us through the Alterman bid for each of those areas.
Do y'all have any questions over the pricing at all?
Who is the, the film was mandated, the intruder-resistant film was mandated by the state, or who is that?
A school, a school safety.
School safety, okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension, I guess it's a new bid, of 22-027 for access control to include the addition of access control and halo monitors to Lakeview High School, Lincoln Middle School, Lone Star Middle School, and Glenn Middle School, as well as halo monitors, which will be added to Central High School for a total price of $990,325 to Alderman, Inc., who has done our other projects.
I'll second that with the additional information that $650,000 will come from our School Safety Allotment grant fund that we have now, also $80,000 from the Title IV fund. And that leaves a $260,325 coming out of general fund with Mr. Brandon's approval on that. I think if we're good with that, then I'd second that.
Sorry, it's coming out of
You're good with that?
Committed fund balance, not general fund. Just to, just to clarify.
All right. We've got a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Dindal. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? And I'll call it for a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion passes. All right. I think that concludes our agenda tonight, unless I've missed anything. We'll mention that we have a finance pre-agenda workshop on May 8th, and a regular board meeting on May 15th. It's late, but we do need to go into executive session for a few minutes under Texas Government Code 551.074 Personnel Matters. And so we're going to recess for a few minutes, and then we'll be back. All right, we're back from executive session. We took no action, we took no votes, and absent any other objection, this meeting will now be adjourned.